We call a meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to order. Thank you for coming. We ask that you rise and join with us. And we ask that you join us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation by Mr. Gordon and the pledge by Mr. Lenora.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for so many blessings. We thank you for this city, this state, this nation. Pray that you would keep your hand on us. Pray that you would help us lead in this upcoming year, that you would give us the wisdom and the courage and the things it takes to move forward. And pray that it would bring honor and glory to your name. And we pray, amen.
While we're in this mode, would you join us in a moment of silence for two public servants who deceased since our last meeting? Ms. Julia Smith, who was one of the first city council persons in the new era, and that era being the era of integration. She served outstandingly well on this body for many, many years, who passed during the month of December. And Mr. Lee Locke, who had long tenure on the Morehouse Parish Police Jury. Let us join, be in a moment of silence in memory of those individuals, and if you will, a prayer for their families as well. Mr. Lenora, will you lead us in the pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Again, thank you for joining us at the meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons. And I thank the board of all the persons for your patience. This is that, you know, every month on this same day, I have to be in Baton Rouge on Wednesdays and Thursdays for firefighters retirement board meeting. And this was a day when there were a couple of other meetings drawn in. As many, most of you know, the inaugural ceremonies for our governor-elect will be held on Monday. So all of the public bodies and organizations right now in Baton Rouge are trying to get their packages together and are dealing with the various transition teams that impact the activities of the various bodies. And everybody is trying to fulfill the needs and requests of the transition teams. The governor has requests for information as he puts his package together and gets his agenda together and is asking for responses to items that were part of his platform. So we wish him well. He is our governor for the next four years, no matter how we voted in November. It doesn't matter now. He's our guy, and we need to get behind Bobby Jindo, who will be sworn in as governor and his staff. And let's try to make Louisiana work as, to the best of its capacity. At this time, will you call a roll, Madam Clerk?
District A.
Present.
District B.
Present.
District C.
Present.
District D.
Present.
District E.
Yer.
My quorum is determined as well. You know, we added an agenda item for announcements, and I guess part of the announcements will be the statement that I made a moment ago about those two public servants who are no longer with us. We sincerely appreciate them for that many years of service. Them being Ms. Julia Mae Smith. She was the representative for District D for many, many years. Ms. Smith was a retired schoolteacher and had been an activist in this community for many, many years. Many of you probably don't know her or don't remember her, but she was a person who was small in stature, but who was extremely dynamic and was always about change. She was an innovator. She challenged systems, whether it was the school system, whether it was the community, whether it was the government, whatever it was. She challenged, and her challenges were positive in that she was always trying to bring about positive change. And we appreciate her. Those of us on this body, we especially stand on her shoulders and are here because she did what she did. Mr. Lee Locke was an innovator as well. He led the initiative for the one man, one vote and reapportionment in Morehouse Parish. And the systems that we have here in this parish are partially the results of his activities. He was the longest-serving police juror, I think thirty-plus, was it thirty-four years? Anybody, can anybody remember?
Thirty.
Thirty years on the, oh.
No.
Thirty-six, ma'am.
Okay, thirty-six years. That's a lifetime. So we appreciate his memory as well. The other announcement is, since we were here last, we lost our police chief.
Yeah.
But it seems like tonight he found his way back here, and we're so proud. Alan Freeman is in the audience in a different capacity. Alan, come on up.
Yeah.
Look at that, look at that Tom, yeah.
Well, he dressed better now than he did when he was here.
Life has gotten good to him.
He makes more money now.
He's lean down there.
Is what now?
He got to dress clean down there.
Oh, my goodness.
I put it on, I put my little pager phone on, and I go around like acting like a doctor.
Now, chief, don't forget your role down there. People don't, if you go down, don't call him Doctor Freeman, for sure. But Alan, we sincerely appreciate the many years of service that you gave the city of Bastrop. Let's see, when Arthur found you here as a patrolman, I believe, he was a patrolman then, Arthur? Patrolman, deputy, whatever?
Yeah.
And then the rest of us, the rest of us, when we came on board, you were chief already. You preceded me by about six or eight months, because when Stan resigned to run for mayor in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, then I think you were selected at that time, right?
Correct.
Now, you became a police officer in, when, nineteen, what?
Seventy-four.
Nineteen seventy-four. I tell you what, most folks don't stay on jobs that long, do they?
Uh, most folks.
Jobs and a lot of other things.
There's always an exception.
There's always an exception?
Yeah.
That's all right. Him and Jesse, right?
Yeah. Why you pick on Jesse, man?
Well, Jesse is our interim chief. You know, we gotta talk about folks like that. But we sincerely appreciate your efforts and the things that you did to make our decision-making and our policymaking better. We're gonna present you with the plaque at some later time, because this just happened so fast. We just weren't, you know, some people say, "I ain't ready for this." But Alan can't.
Some people got blown mad, won't even talk to them.
Some people don't.
Right.
My goodness, that's all right. They're selfish. They're selfish. But we appreciate you, and we have fond memories. We had good times, we had tough times, but those were the times you're supposed to have. Your service will always be remembered in the city of Bastrop, and we appreciate you. And we wish you Godspeed. We wish you have much success. And this is, I believe we talked one time, and you told me that, you know, you worked at the mill, the police department, and that this is your third career.
Yeah, I had to go for that interview, and that was the third interview I ever did in my life.
I guess the one good thing about it, each one of them, you got the job.
I did.
A lot of people can't say that, can they?
And the first job was at Georgia Pacific, and I had just graduated.
Okay.
And my birthday wasn't until August, but I went up and put an application in, figuring, you know, it'd be, we'd get out in May, and I figured it'd take that long for them to call me. They called me the next month, come to work. So I go up there, like I know what I'm doing, and then they start asking for birth certificates. And I go, you know, my birthday's not till August. And that mill manager looked at me, said, "Well, if you want a job that bad, he's out, I'm gonna hold this spot, dog."
Wow.
And he did it.
That's pretty good. So you have never been unemployed?
No.
That's really, really good. That's really good. Any comments? Anybody besides me? I don't wanna monopolize it, but we just say thank you.
You're welcome.
Give him a round of applause for his service. We'll be having, our social director will be planning some activities, and we'll be calling you back. At the same time, Jesse, would you come up?
Chief, while Jesse's on the way, and I think Alan and everyone else realized that I've had a nice working relationship with Alan. I could always go in and talk with him, and most time I got good results. And I just appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with you, and I appreciate the friendship we had.
I appreciate it.
And thank you, thank you very much.
It was good times, it really was. A lot of you are new ones compared to Arthur and the mayor, but I appreciate the mayor's guidance through all that stuff, and Arthur was always there. He always came by and had coffee with us every morning. And all of y'all supported me and the department, and one hundred percent, if we could just follow what we needed. And all I wanna say is I appreciate it all, and I'm gonna miss it. I had to go.
Gotta go, you gotta go.
You gotta go.
I asked Mr. Walker to come up, because I took action. Don't leave ex-chief. I had Mr. Walker to come up, because I wanted to officially present him to the body. We, and along with Chief Freeman, we talked about the transition and how we were gonna go about doing what we had to do. And I asked him his suggestion as to how we should handle the situation, and he recommended, and it was on my mind as well, that we asked Mr. Walker to serve. First, we wanted to know if he were interested in being the chief, and he readily answered, what?
None in any way.
So there was no way I could misunderstand that, right?
No, sir.
But I asked Mr. Walker if he would serve in that state. And that's some civil service things that we have to do depending on time and all that. So because the chief's position is an appointed position, it has to be approved by you, and civil service certified and tested and all that, there's a window that we'll be going through, and we are estimating three, four, maybe five months, depending on timing. But Mr. Walker will be serving there, and depending on the time, we might have to come back and do something more official than we're doing now. But I sincerely appreciate you for helping us during this transition.
Yes, sir.
And we depend, we depend on you, and we, I know you can handle it. I have no doubt in my mind.
I'll give it my best shot.
All right, then, after forty years, right?
I should be able to.
Forty-three?
Almost forty-three.
Now, were you ever unemployed?
Very short time, from the time I got out of the Marine Corps until now.
Really?
You know, it's this kinda funny story. Alan's father retired from the police department as a system chief. And when I applied to the police department, I still was service testing everything, Julia was told, the chief said, "Don't hire that fella, he won't stay." So, forty-three years later, I'm still here, but he must've thought, you know, not too bad of me, because when he got ready to retire, he had to retire before we could hire Alan. At that time, you couldn't hire family members. And he requested that Alan leave place on my shift, I was running patrol shift at the time. So apparently, I did a pretty good job, drank, I don't know, he was pretty very chief.
So not only did you prove it to Julia, you proved it to Alan, too, that you could stick and stay. I'm gonna, thank you very much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take things out of order on our agenda, and thank you, Mr. Gordon, for helping me. I'm in a, I'm in a travel mode right now. We've been driving for the last four hours. Item number twelve on our agenda is resolution number zero-eight, twelve-thirty. A resolution commending Alan Freeman upon retirement as chief of the Bastrop Police Department, and all the other stuff that we said going along there. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution zero-eight, one-two-three-zero.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I second that.
Mr. Lenora and Ms. Robinson jointly second that motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted, you'll be given a copy of this, sir. Thank you very much. All right, then. You had a long day's work today.
Go ahead.
For those of you who don't know, Chief Freeman is starting the police department at the LSU Medical Center in Monroe. So he's, I guess that's every police chief's dream, to start up a whole department and all the stuff that you ever wanted to do, you got a chance to do it. Well, we wish you well.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Bye.
Okay. Okay, the minutes of the, item number five on the agenda is announced, approved minutes of previous meetings. We had a meeting, regular meeting, on December thirteenth, two thousand and seven.
Mayor Hawkins, I'll make the motion that we accept these minutes with the exception of some minor corrections, please.
Okay.
And I've noted them in.
We'll pass them on to the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you very much. There was a motion to approve and adopt the minutes with the necessary corrections. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gordon and Ms. Robinson jointly second that motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say no, and the ayes have it. Item number six is finance committee report. Mr. Hamlin.
May I make a motion that we adopt party at zero-eight, forty-one fifty-six building plan for the month of December?
Mr. Hamlin makes a motion.
I'll second Mr. Hamlin's motion.
All our motions are jointly seconded, by Mr. Gordon and Mr. Lenora.
In a hurry, man.
In a hurry, trying to make up for my lateness. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye. Those who oppose may say no, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We've been talking, and those of us who've been here for a while have gone through actions in the past in dealing with zoning, land use, master plan, planning. And you had tasked me to be about that business, and for some period of time, I've been talking to an associate, and she's been bringing her associate with her and that team to present to us and talk to us about a master plan, land use, zoning, regulations, all the other kinda stuff, whatever label you wanna put to it. These ladies and their partners have, and I have been talking for some period of time, and in your package today, you have a document that's in response to a proposal that I made to them. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Lillian Priest and her associate to come forward, please, and give us a brief introduction of yourselves, and then we'll have, I asked them to give a brief introduction, elaborating and enhancing what you have there in that document. First, please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Mayor Hawkins, and to members of the city council. We appreciate it. Thank you for allowing us to come and make a presentation. As Mayor Hawkins stated earlier, we've started this dialogue probably about two years ago. And of course, we're here, starting out the year two thousand and eight, with a presentation that we would like to present and make to each of, each and every one of you. I'm Lillian Priest, and this is Sharon Swanson. And we have jointly, two firms, which is Morgan Hill, Sutton and Mitchell Architects, and Jay Levine Enterprises. We are a Shreveport, Louisiana-based firm with a number of years of experience. The key project staff persons that would be involved with this master plan, of course, would be Sharon Swanson, who is a certified planner with approximately twenty-three years of experience. Kim Mitchell, who is an architect in principle with over thirty years of experience.
Do you wanna reposition the podium? If you reposition the podium, come a little bit to the right, and you'll be out of the field.
To the left?
To your left.
To my left, okay.
Okay, good.
Okay. And of course, myself, I'm Lillian Priest, as I stated earlier, with over twenty-three years of experience in the planning field. And Janie Samuels, who is also a partner with over twenty-six years of experience in planning, consulting, and in banking and finance. So what we've talked about and dialogued about are three basic areas, and I think Mayor Hawkins alluded a little bit earlier, that you should have received a copy of this proposal in your packets. So if there are some things specifically that we need to address about our background or what have you, it's there in the package. But if you do have any questions, of course, we're here to answer those questions with you. What we're talking about is the Bastrop planning for the future and the proposed services that we started talking about. And the mayor requested that we talk about three primary services of being able to provide to the city of Bastrop. One would be a future master land use plan, the other development code, zoning ordinance, and the paint-your-heart-out Bastrop home improvement program. So those are some of the things that we are going to present to you tonight. What we're talking about, this team of Morgan Hill, Sutton and Mitchell, and Jay Levine Enterprises, we bring a wealth of experience, of course, in the planning arena. We have a proven track record. We've worked together successfully on several joint projects in the Shreveport area and some of the other surrounding communities. So professionally, we are a recognized and an award-winning team. And I'm going to ask Sharon to come up now, and she's going to talk more in detail about what the master plan is and some things, and then I will come back up and talk about some other specifics with the paint-your-heart-out and several others.
Good evening. When you embark on a master plan, the master plan basically answers three questions. The question is, what is the state of Bastrop today? In other words, how did we get here? How did we get here? And the second question, what does Bastrop want to be in the future? That's where you take your long-range perspective and develop a vision for twenty, twenty-five years out. And then the third step, how will Bastrop get there? And that's basically developing the actions that you need to take to get from today to that vision you have for the future. Now, master plans can be as big as you want and can address a very broad array of elements, such as land use, transportation, housing. We propose to develop a plan that is unique to Bastrop, that's focused on Bastrop's needs, and not just a bunch of pages filled with data that are unnecessary to you, so that it's, will end up being a strategic plan. Also, I want to point out that the legal authority for a master plan comes through the planning commission, where they recommend that master plan to the city council. So the city council is actually the body that will adopt and approve the plan for implementation. Now, the issues to be addressed in a master plan basically are ones that answer the questions regarding current and future growth, or what we might also call change. And the goal of the master plan would be, how do we posture Bastrop in the best possible position to thrive amongst change? And what are the positive and the negative impacts of growth and change on the community of Bastrop? So you'll look about the amount of growth, the location of growth, where is it happening? Where is it you want it to happen? What's the character of growth that Bastrop would be interested in? What are the economic drivers of growth? What are the cost implications for infrastructure for Bastrop as it grows or doesn't grow? You know, all those scenarios. And then, in looking at those issues of growth, potential issues that are perhaps specific to Bastrop that we've uncovered in our conversations, and they could certainly be more than the list here, but is to look at property, you know, by doing a master plan, by doing a zoning ordinance, to secure property value preservation and neighborhood preservation, looking at opportunities for new housing development that Bastrop would like to see, looking at how to strengthen the commercial quarters in Bastrop, and how to leverage investment into those quarters, looking how to, again, secure, enhance the already marvelous efforts that are being made in the Main Street program and in the downtown area, to look at land use conflicts, bars that might be operating in neighborhoods, auto uses that might be operating in neighborhoods that can't be controlled because you don't have the mechanisms to control them, looking at issues of mobile homes and proper placement of mobile homes so that they provide an alternative form of housing for the community but do not overly distract from property values and the strength in the community of Bastrop. Looking at annexation, where, you know, where are those growth areas? What is a proper policy for annexation? Where do we wanna go? When's the appropriate time to extend infrastructure to make annexation a logical decision rather than a reactive decision to growth that's kind of happening without anyone being able to take a look at it? And then also quality of life, not only culture, but parks and open space, and how can those be used to improve the quality of life in Bastrop? Then, secondly, so we mentioned we've been asked to look at what, doing a zoning ordinance as we lead out of the master plan for Bastrop. And of course, you have to do, authorizing legislation requires that you do this comprehensive plan before you can enact a zoning ordinance. And that's because you have to establish legally that you've had careful consideration of what is in the general welfare of the citizens of Bastrop in order to regulate property in the city of Bastrop. So that's the purpose of doing that comprehensive plan. And the purpose of doing a zoning ordinance is basically to determine the appropriate use of land. You know, where appropriate, where is residential appropriate? Where is industrial development appropriate? Where is commercial development appropriate? And how are those uses buffered, or how are they buffered between those uses? How are buildings set out on lots so that you provide for sufficient separation for fire safety issues and things of that nature? And then a zoning ordinance would also address what would be called non-conforming uses, uses that are in existence today, that you do not want to say that's an appropriate land use, but would have a right to continue under a grandfathered clause, but should the use change, should the building be burned down or something like that, that that use would then go away, and the area can then be appropriately developed along with that long-term vision that you had for the community. So that kind of answers the types of things that you'll be looking at as you embark on a master land use plan and on a general zoning ordinance. And Lillian is really the one with the experience and the expertise in a number of paint-your-heart-out programs in other communities, and I'll let her briefly explain that to you.
As Sharon mentioned earlier, and she talked about the master plan and the zoning, and you said, "Well, we're going through a planning phase, but many times you also want to see something happen, something that's going to have results that will energize and motivate the community." And what we're talking, we've talked with Mayor Hawkins about, of course, is a paint-your-heart-out program. We would call it Paint Your Heart Out Bastrop. This is a program that's been around for many years. It started out in Tampa, Tampa, Florida. And back in nineteen ninety-one, I had the opportunity to go to Tampa, Florida, and bring the program back to Shreveport, Louisiana. And we've been doing Paint Your Heart Out Shreveport for, since nineteen ninety-two. Each year, the city does approximately seventy-five to one hundred houses in one day. We've also done this program in the city of Mansfield. We've done this program with one of the casinos in Bossier City. So what we're talking about here is a paint-your-heart-out program where you have community and volunteer involvement. It improves the quality of housing for low-to-moderate-income senior citizens. It leverages neighborhood investment, and it helps to stabilize the value of property, and it promotes team building and community pride. What we're talking about here is a program where you take, it takes a period of time to generate the interest, build teams of volunteers who will also donate resources. And then on one particular day that you designate, that is designated, where they are going to actually go into the community, if you're targeting a specific neighborhood, or if it's going to be. or if it's going to be citywide. And those individuals who are usually 62 years of age or older, they are homeowners, their homes are in need of some exterior repairs, but they do not have the resources in order to make those repairs. So teams of volunteers from, if it's 50 houses, you'd have 50 teams. If it's 25 houses, you'd have 25 teams of volunteers that would come in and actually do the facade improvements to those homes. And you'd be surprised at what new paint job, replacing some of the rotten boards and what have you to homes, what it does for those individuals. This is what this program is all about. But while you're going through the planning phase of it, this would be something that could really motivate, energize, and get the community behind your planning process. It's an excellent program. It's a team-building program, but it also gets you more into the area of housing and preservation, especially for homeownership. So that's our Paint Your Heart Out program there.
Excuse me. May I ask a question before we go through the entire, to avoid redundancing? I can appreciate the points that you made about the preservation of communities and neighborhoods, the resources and the cost for that, for the materials.
Okay.
Would you recommend?
I would explain that to you. This is normally the way the program has worked in the past, is that what we would do is be the arms and the legs, along with any other city staff, we would come in and help and set up a volunteer steering committee, because you live here and you know the community. We would develop an application process. Then we would also put together the sponsorship packets and would actually go into the community, get, paint, there are some resources that the city would have to use dollars to support. But we also get places like Walmart, IP, other businesses that would say, hey, I want to sponsor a team, or I want to be a sponsor. We have nice t-shirts done, you have your own logo, how you want it done, and that's some of the in-kind. We have cash and in-kind, and that's how it's done. There's usually an allocation per house as to how much is going to be expended. The homeowner gets the opportunity to pick the colors, along with what the committee has decided upon, if you're going to have three standard colors that you want to use, or the trim, the homeowner gets to participate.
Well, in undertaking the three activities that we've mentioned, a land use plan, a zoning ordinance, and the Paint Your Heart Out program, will benefit BASTRIP in many ways. The first one is to be competitive and master change. And again, I know I mentioned that before, but it really is about taking charge of your future and controlling your destiny, and rather than being at the whims of a changing world, very fast-changing world out there, you're helping to set your own direction, so you're being proactive versus reactive. And it's to preserve and enhance BASTRIP's unique sense of place. This is about building on what's best about BASTRIP, not about building a BASTRIP as a Shreveport, or trying to make BASTRIP look just like Shreveport. It's about building on what's best about BASTRIP and exploiting BASTRIP's strengths, because it is, in this changing world, it is about finding uniqueness and your niche in the marketplace in many ways. And probably this next step is probably the most important reason to undertake a master plan and a zoning ordinance, and that is to encourage and leverage investment. Planning leads to stable, predictable, and fair policies within which development, entrepreneurship, and the marketplace can prosper. It's my understanding, BASTRIP has perhaps not had some housing development, perhaps has not attracted some commercial development, out of concern that there aren't the zoning development regulations here to protect that investor's investment in that property. And so people look to, if I'm going to invest, I want to ensure that this community is going to protect my investment and what it's going to allow to occur next to me and develop adjacent to me before I put that money on the line. So that's probably one of the main reasons to embark on this. And then, the next one is also very important. As I mentioned before, it's about providing the efficient use of your scarce resource. BASTRIP only has so much money that comes in a year. There's only so much in grant money that's available to you. The idea is by growing your community or the economic aspect of your community, that pot can grow, but you need to make good use of those resources. So what a master plan can do is it allows a community to decide how it's going to stage its public improvements, to do so in a timely and orderly fashion, basically to identify where public resources can have the biggest return on the investment. Where are you going to get the biggest bang for your buck when you make your decisions about water extensions, road improvements? How does that, how will that leverage private investment that then again grows the pile a little larger? And then, of course, it's also about making informed decisions without having information at your hand. Sometimes you're making decisions, as we say, it's like looking for a light switch in the dark, as well-intentioned as those decisions are. So a master plan will compile a lot of information, not only statistically, but from within the community, so that you can make wiser decisions at a city council. And then, lastly, a master plan and a zoning ordinance and this Paint Your Heart Out program allows you to act. It builds a consensus around what those actions are going to be, you know, what are the next steps that we need to take to get to that future vision that we have ourselves? And it tells you how, who's going to do it, when's it going to get done? And that's, again, very important. Plan just can't, oh, get a plan with a bunch of pretty pictures, and then it just sits there. It's going to have recommendations of saying within certain timeframes, these are things that you should embark upon, and be the goal of the administration and the city council to see that that ship sails. The deliverables that we, as a team, commit to delivering to you are an existing land use base map. You need to know exactly parcel by parcel what's here before you can know how you're going to zone it. And you need to know what you're going to make non-conforming. So that's the importance of the existing land use base map. We also have as an option a housing condition survey, so that you can identify where your, what neighborhoods are stable or portions of neighborhoods that are stable, and what portions of neighborhoods might be in need of assistance, to allow you to know where to focus your efforts, again, to target the efficient use of your scarce resources. We promise to deliver to you, as I mentioned, a strategic master land use plan, not just a land use plan that's going to cover everything and it's just going to really say nothing on a piece of paper, but to focus on what you identify are your specific needs and issues. We promise to develop, to deliver to you what we call a foundational zoning ordinance. Again, you know, New York City, some cities, you know, their zoning ordinances are enormous. We know that this will be a first step for the community. So we promise to deliver you what we call a foundational development ordinance that provides sufficient protections necessary to encourage that private investment that we mentioned, yet is sufficiently simple to administer and to grow from. We promise to deliver the Paint Your Heart Out program and other housing policy initiatives that you might be interested in your community. We promise to deliver documents of utmost quality in content and presentation. And we promise by involvement of yourselves and the Planning Commission and the community to develop a plan and an ordinance and projects, which we believe the city leadership and the community will support, that we will provide something to you that you will be able to pass. And I just want to briefly, very quickly, go through sets of maps, maybe give you an idea of what some of these deliverables might look like. So what you're looking at here is, you know, is a map that would show you your existing land use, broken down into the different categories of different types of residential and commercial and industrial, public areas and such. We'll look at, you know, another part of that land use service allows you to identify and map where your vacant parcels are in your community and where your vacant buildings are in your community. Those can be sometimes something that detracts from the community, but they also can be an opportunity for the community, and having that mapped becomes a useful tool to you. We'll have to look, and this is by no means everything we would look at, but we have to look at what are the constraints in the neighborhood, in the community, you know, floodplains, topography, environmental contamination, if there's potential environmentally sites, things of that nature, wetlands, so that we can develop appropriate policies around that. Again, sometimes, those are constraints, sometimes they're opportunity areas for parks and open spaces to build around those areas. As I mentioned, we can do a housing condition survey that would identify those homes that are in standard condition, those that are substandard, and those that are dilapidated. Again, as you see, by coloring it, showing it on a map, it really starts to allow you to focus on where, to look at trends of what's happening in a neighborhood. Sometimes, to see it on a map, see it in color, you really can't understand what's happening and where it's growing from. So it can be, again, a helpful tool to you. And just moving along, different documents that can illustrate what a future master land use plan is, along with the strategies. Said we want to have a strategic document, if you can go to the next one, a strategic document where we, you know, not, where we can, you know, kind of identify what those opportunity areas are, and we can look at how those opportunity areas link and leverage with other areas of the community. You can look at your commercial quarters and what the, because your commercial quarters are often what people first see when they enter your community, they're the gateways to your community, and that's where also the community goes to obtain its services. So how to strengthen those commercial quarters. And then, if there's particular projects that might be of a particular interest or need in the community, we have the in-hand ability to draw sketches, to show what that park improvement or pocket park or street skate might look like, in order to mobilize and energize people around the idea of moving forward with these projects. So in some ways, your master plan becomes a marketing tool in ways, even if you're seeking grants. Once you have some of these projects and these concepts drawn out, it allows you to think more broadly about where you might be able to get grants from, and gives you the marketing tool and the information to go get those grants. And then, of course, to let, end up with an official zoning map that would be accompanied by your text zoning ordinance document. So Lillian?
And of course, now that you've seen all of the plan and the proposed services, we did provide with you, for you in your packet, a copy of the proposed budget, and of course, dealing with the timelines, and as we discussed with the mayor, that we were looking at somewhat of an eight-month, eight-to-10-month timeline window there for these deliverables. And in here, of course, we broke it down with the project item and five tasks, with the project initiation, task two being the existing land use plan and development constraints, which would also include the housing condition survey, task three, which would be the assessment and land use master plan, and task four, the development of the code and the zoning ordinances, and then task five, of course, would be that tangible product would be the Paint Your Heart Out program. So that's what we have, that we're presenting to you, along with the estimated, any estimated reimbursables. And what we're saying is that total of those five tasks that we are presenting there, we are looking at total items, one through five, $60,550 with total options, and we noticed we said the word options, $75,550. So those, that's the proposed budget and the timeline. And of course, this explains what we're talking about here. The next slide, Sharon, which is the labor costs, reimbursables, the Paint Your Heart Out, and of course, there was a fee that was in there for the Paint Your Heart Out, but that does not, as asked earlier, does not include, you know, cost for paint and those kinds of equipment and what have you. And then, of course, our estimated timeline for those five tasks would be within an eight month period of time. Where do we go from here?
And that eight month is with the cooperation.
Yes.
That it's mandated in order for, to reach that drop dead date, that there has to be sufficient cooperation from this board of all the persons and citizens, because they can't come in here and do this project themselves, right?
Right.
They have to, there'll be meetings and input and participation and local guidance that's necessary. So we're not talking about these two ladies coming in and going in a room and running all over the town, all over city to do this. This is a participatory event, and if it's to work, we have to make it work.
Thank you. And that's what, that's one of the philosophies that we have, is that planning is done with people, not for people, because if it's done with people, then you have the buy-in.
On my ship.
And so that's what we're talking about, planning with people, not for people. So what we're saying, the next steps that we can do, one is to authorize mayor to execute a contract, negotiate any final scope of services, and of course, sign the contract, organize, develop, schedule and timeline, that's something that's working together with you as to what would be the best time to do this, if there's a specific area, just say for an example, with Paint Your Heart Out, what would be a good time of the year that you would like to see this actually happen? You know, when do you think people really want to come out and do something? One good thing that I didn't mention about Paint Your Heart Out is that we're saying it's a, it's a one-day project. It's a one-day project. Many times when we get volunteers, you know, volunteers will only give you so many hours. And if you say, well, you've got to come to something every month, once a week, all these kinds of things, we're saying one day, and most people will give you one day. And what they do, they come out, they energize early in the morning, they paint the home, you give them a little gathering party at the end of the day, they really feel good, they have signs in the yard, this house is painted by IP, this house is painted by Walmart or whatever, and many times, people go back and see the elderly and kind of check on them. So it's a feel-good thing. The next, of course, reestablished planning commission, that's a key part of this process.
And members, I had forgotten this, but Mark, you remember, I think we had to, we created a planning commission as part of the historic district and part of the project, the high school project. We found documentation staff, and I can't remember, was it 2006? But there's a planning commission that's a part of that, and so we have the fundamentals in place, but we need to make it a living being, living and functioning body.
And of course, begin the planning process, conduct, of course, your Paint Your Heart Out, BASTRIP, adopt a plan and a zoning ordinance, and call us with any questions or concerns that you may have. Those are what we would like to present to you as our next steps. And Sharon, you want to talk about the council role or?
Why don't we, let's stop here for one minute and let me get input and participation from the board of all the persons. What's your reaction? What are your feelings? What are your questions up to this point? Ms. Ali?
Thank you. How would you recommend coordinating with a zoning board, which we do not have established at this time, but how does this plan function with the establishment of a zoning board?
Legally, your planning commission, there's, the authorizing legislation for planning allows your planning commission to act as your zoning commission in a city. They just have to hold two separate meetings, be on the same day, they just have to adjourn on one day, convene, you know, convene during the same meeting. So really, your planning commission reviews and adopts, not reviews, the master plan, recommends it to the city council for adoption. And then they undertake the administrat- estration of a zoning ordinance, terms of hearing cases. It'd be the, the planning commission acting as the zoning commission. If I, if that's the question you were asking.
It is, thank you.
And so by reestablishing this planning commission, you would just simply, in fact, I think it's, yeah, it might be in the ordinance. If not, you, you just have to enact that state authorizing legislation that allows the planning commission to also act as your zoning commission.
We need to revisit that planning commission, take another look at it to be sure that it's reflective. We talked, and I can't remember, we talked about seven, it, it, when you read the ordinance, I think you said it spoke to seven members. And we need to be sure that it's reflective of its, the composition that we wanted to have, so we need to go from there.
Mayor.
Ms. Robinson?
Um, my question is, can you pick and choose from these recommendations that you have according to what would be most important to start with, and then?
Yes, that's why we provided a menu.
Okay.
So that you can have your salad, entree, dessert.
Speaking of which, I'm hungry.
Well, so, I mean, certainly, I mean, we, we have that sub, the subdivision ordinance and the housing condition survey as an option, because we feel that those are probably least critical to everything you want to undertake. Certainly, a first step is to do some of that existing land use inventory. It helps with the Paint Your Heart Out program to identify those homes that are in need of repair. And also, uh, you know, to, to start that assessment of your community, because that really is about identi-, you know, doing your problem identification and analyzing the trends or forces that are having impacts upon your commi- uh, community. So, that's certainly a first step that you have to take, um, and then from, and.
Would you go back to that slide again?
And then from there, your land, your.
It's on page twenty.
You have to do your comprehensive plan before you can do your zoning ordinance. So, if you need to, you can go only as far as your comprehensive plan, it just doesn't give you that ability to.
In our discussions, that was, uh, foundational activity, which dealt with the, uh, naturally the commission, but the, uh, if you go to the, the budget piece, and, and we can use that one as, I think you basically have them in the order of, of priority. The, the existing land use plan development is kind of foundational to everything else, isn't it?
It is. But this could be done without this, or if this needed to be done as a phase two, it could be done as a phase two separate kind of the master plan.
When you say this, you mean three, three and four, but two is, but we got to initiate one, and two, we got to do the, do an analysis. So, that's kind of first, and then we can chair a pick i- in, in the middle.
And I think, you know, if you're, you're wanting to invest into this, you know, the land use plan somewhat just naturally fall, uh, flow, flows from, from that, you know, and would be worth your investment to take that step towards your, your master plan.
We, we, I've, I've, and board of all the persons, before I presented this to you, I, I did my homework and talked to staff and looked at our finances. And I'm going to be prepared to recommend to you that we do steps one through five. Is that, that's including the Paint Your Heart Out, the sixty thousand plus the, uh, the seventy-five hundred dollar, yeah, to, to make, to make it with. Where am I, Lillian?
Right there. Come at this and this.
This.
One through five would be the sixty thousand.
Yeah, one through five. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm seeing something that I'm not seeing, and there's another page with some options at the bottom that's not there, okay?
Yeah, well, these, well, actually, we just did the table a little different. This is the option, this is the option, and that's the total with those options.
Okay.
Okay, what, what I'm, 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 uh.
That option would be under task two, housing condition survey, and.
And this is optional, and this is.
And then the subdivision ordinance is optional.
So, y'all gave me the, y'all gave me the book and planted that in my mind, and then y'all changed on me, so, but, yeah. I remember this, but, uh, the seventy thousand, uh, numbers, seventy thousand, sixty, yeah, yeah. That, that's what I'm looking at. Mr. Lenore?
Uh, uh, you know, I was looking at how you had that broke down and, in a sense there, um, and what kind of timeline? You've mentioned some timelines in there, as we progress along.
We were looking at an eight-month, uh, estimated timeline there.
I put a tab on it.
Oh, okay, okay, and?
I, I told him that I, I really needed it done, but, but the, the big window is by the end of 2008, but preferably around October.
So, you would have all of this done by October?
With assistance.
With assistance.
We will have it done within eight months. And so quickly a contract gets signed and initiated, um, and assuming, you know, I think we, I think we can do it.
Okay.
I mean, that, we can do, I mean, that's what we're going to commit to, to, to do. I can't guarantee the October until I have this on a contract.
But it's an eight-month.
Okay.
But if you're all willing to move quickly, we're willing to move quickly. We're, we're, we're available to start working, so.
What do we do once we, in the event we sign a contract and come to a consensus on some things? What do you do in terms of aiding us in marketing what you discover about our community? Let's say this for commercial development, do you assist us with marketing that?
That's not a part of the contract.
It's not, it's not part of the contract, but we certainly at that point in time, if you needed our services, um.
Everything is for a price, right? There is a price, there is a price.
I think we are an architectural firm, and we do have those design capabilities to interact with.
Let me mention.
And show how specific sites could be developed.
Let me speak to that. What, what they'll be doing, and, and this, this project is going to be infused and coordinated with Tanya and Mark and Kay King, Chamber of Commerce, and all of us. We have people that are part of our team right now that are doing some of the things that, but we need this in place in order to make them more effective in what they do. So, uh, their project is, and includes those things that they've mentioned, which are preliminary and foundational and fundamental, fundamental to doing the economic development and the marketing and all that. So, we got to get that in place. But I'm pretty sure, they, they either know they have the capacity, or they know somebody who does, if, when we get, if and when we get to that, that stage, if that's something that's desired, along with some other stuff. If you're reading in the, in the, in the handout, the background of these ladies and their team, you'll find that they have a variety of experiences. Ms. Priest is on the school board in, in Caddo Parish, and she formerly was a part of housing in, in the city of Shreveport. And just by being a part of an architectural firm, you can go and know the competence and, and background and experiences of Ms.
Certified, certified planner, um, and I also worked within the planning department for ten years, where I had administered a zoning ordinance, so it's not like I could, you know, why are you doing all the process?
And we have some expe-.
During the process and the paperwork, I've seen it on both, I've seen it on both sides, so.
Okay, Ms. Watson, we have some expertise. Kay King, who's our economic development person, is a planner, certified surveyor. Mark Vareen is our historic direct district. So, we have some, some of that, so we, we have the competence. Where we need to go, members of board of all the persons, is do you have any questions about the package itself? Do you need to have any more questions for them? And you might, I don't know if you, I'm not going to put you on the spot and make, have you to make a decision at this time, unless you're comfortable with doing so. But let's ask questions about the presentation that they've made and what, and the deliverables I insisted that they present to you, if you have any questions about those as well.
My question.
Mr. Hamlin?
Are we talking about task one through five? Are we looking at task one through five plus the options? So, Lillian, sixty thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Thank you.
And I have a question, at each task, and we will fund them as we get to these tasks, right? Are they funded all along in the contract? Uh, I, I, I need to know that, and then one other thing, you told me how much experience you had, and I believe you, and I don't doubt that. But can you throw at me a, maybe a few cities that you have been instrumental in either, either helping or getting off the ground or getting started? And, uh, if you may.
Okay. City of Mansfield.
Okay.
City of Shreveport. And when I say city of Shreveport, I was the director of housing and urban development for fifteen years, and so, uh, the city. Horseshoe Casino with some of their grassroots-type projects. The city of Kenner.
Okay.
City of Monroe, Jefferson Parish Community Development, those are some, and then Cheryl, you can talk about some others.
We have, um, worked in Monroe. We've done some work for, um, some neighborhood work in Monroe. We've done a number of different plans in the Shreveport community, some of them regional, um, very broad-based, and some of them down to a very several-block area, in terms of coming up with a strategic plan of how to improve, improve their area. We've also worked for some of the small towns in northwest Louisiana on a scenic byway plan. We've done a master plan for West Feliciano Parish, um.
Good enough.
Okay.
As a part of Mr. Lenore's question, could you be more specific about your services to Monroe?
Um, we are working, actually, we're still in process on a neighborhood plan in south, on the south side of Monroe. Working for the New Light Economic Empowerment Corporation, of doing a neighborhood and housing revitalization plan for that neighborhood. Very similar process, you know, it's very similar process. This would just be, you know, a little lo- a larger scale in terms of dealing with Bastrop community. But, you know, you go in and, and you assess the, you assess the community and the housing conditions, and you look at the quality of the streets, and you look at, at lighting, and you, you see the problem areas, but you also see the opportunity areas, and you try to identify those, and you meet with the community and get their ideas of what they like about their neighborhood, what they don't like, what they want to see changed, what they want to be, remain the same. And, um, and we're now coming up with, you know, a number of, you know, land use plan, where, where infill housing would be more appropriate versus new housing, where new housing would be more appropriate. Areas that don't need infill housing or new housing, but just need some repair. Or can you just look at, there's some homes where, you know, the neighborhood's fine, but, you know, they actually could just use some, you know, landscaping assistance. And, you know, can we develop programs that provide landscaping assistance? So, it's all about trying to identify the specific needs. And in Bastrop, I think we would want to look at Bastrop at a neighborhood level. And what is it those neighborhoods need, as well as the wider Bastrop community.
Also in Monroe, worked with the city of Monroe on their five-year consolidated plan, as well as their economic, they had an economic development initiative application over there. So, those are also some additional ones.
I have one other question.
Ms. Robinson?
If you go into a neighborhood and you want to kind of redo the whole thing, is it possible to do away with the electrical poles? Or are the cities doing any of that, where, I don't know, where you go underground or what?
Well, we, I mean, that's something that we often try to recommend, um, communities try to do. It, it is tough, but it's almost impossible to do without a plan. I mean, because what a plan does is it brings all of those stakeholders together. You can bring your utility representatives to the table and say, you know, we're trying to do a master plan here, and then start working with them. This is a goal we want to want, how do we get there? But without that process and without that effort, you're not going to get there. And it is about them being able to explain, you know, the cost picture to you, and for you to be able to explain from a bit bigger perspective, how it might be that there's some benefits that they do derive by taking those actions, and what it can do for a neighborhood. So, um, I know it's interesting, my husband was in Germany and found that all of their communities, all of their utilities are underground. And he was just so impressed at what a difference it made in the quality of, in, in the quality of the communities. And he just said every ti- every town, small, large, that's how they do it in Germany. Now, that, this is Germany, but I think those are the conversations that you would want to have around the table with, um, the stakeholders that are local, and then the stakeholders that are, are regional and have an effect upon you.
Well, just for your information, I think Richmond, Virginia did the same thing in one of their newer subdivision.
Now, through subdivision ordinances, through subdivision ordinances, if you did a subdivision ordinance, if, and that might be something you would do down the road after you get administering a zoning ordinance under your belt, you could require new development. It wouldn't be the utility coming to the development, but you can require within the development that utilities be underground. That you, that you can do through a subdivision ordinance.
In respect to task number two, can you tell me, does that include your, the land use map, does that include the, the complete city limits? Or is that just the corridors coming into the city?
No, that, that would, in all likelihood, not only just include the complete city limits, but an area that we would try to figure out, kind of what is that area of influence outside of the city? With the idea that, that there may be, um, growth areas outside the city that you may want to grow into, or you may not, but they're affecting you as a community, and we'll, we would need to know what's happening there. So, it would actually be an area that's, if, if we can get, find the base mapping for it, that would be slightly larger than the city.
Okay.
Um, let me just leave you with.
It was steps. Go, keep going, keep going, right here, council role.
And, and we don't necessarily need to go through all of these, but city council would have a very active role in the plan, plans that are developed, one by encouraging the participation of community residents and making sure they participate in the meeting, that would be important. But, um, but also it would be the body to review and adopt the plan and the zoning. So, it's important to keep informed as the process goes along. I just, most of mine just always like to leave with a few inspirational poems, um, one from Mario and Dreddy. But, you know, it's all, you know, if you, if you're motivated, if you allow yourself to dream, and if you're persistent, you, you will be a successful community.
And with that, that ends our presentation, unless you have any further questions for us. We really appreciate you allowing us the time on your council agenda. We pledge that we have a commitment to excellence, and should you decide to accept this proposal, we look forward to working with the city, each and every one of you, along with the other stakeholders in the city of Bastrop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Where are you, board of all the persons, as far as, is this an action item, that, or do you want to delay it? What do you want to do?
I'd like to delay this item, Mayor Hawkins, for time for review. Take a, a look at it, read through it, uh, prove it more, more carefully. I know time is of the essence, but I think you need to consider any contract before, before we sign into something. I think we need to take a time of consideration.
Okay, is that the consensus?
Um, Mayor Hawkins?
Ms. Robinson?
I would like for us to look at this further, but I also would like to have Mark and Tanya and Kay involved in a meeting to discuss it.
But if that's your desire?
Thank you. And anybody else that would, would be beneficial to helping us decide.
Okay, all right, so at this point, we're all taking that. Mr. Hamlin?
I, I understand what everyone is saying. And we're talking about time, and, and we're speaking in terms of zoning. I, I, I'd like to remind you that we were in the process of establishing a zoning ordinance once before. And we worked, worked right up, had it basically prepared, but it was right up before election time. And we elected not to, not to act on it. So, in preparing for this. So, in preparing for this, I hope we don't wait until the last minute, decide to adopt it, to do something with it. And when it comes talking about zoning, it's going to be close up to your time of reelection and, and change your mind and not act on it. So while we're putting off, let's look at, let's look at the timeline, eight months this is going to take, and look at when you're going to be up for reelection. Thank you.
Mr. Lenore, you about to say something?
I'm for delaying it, but not too long. I have some questions of the, I, I, I think in terms of the bottom line a lot of times. And I have a few, just a few answers I need to get basically from the city concerning the bottom line, the cost. And I think I will be satisfied and ready to make a movement. I don't mean a long delay, I, I just a few things that we need to discuss as a family or a city.
Okay. All right.
Is there?
Ms. Allen?
Is there a minimum contract amount that you would engage yourself with us in picking and choosing?
There is that, there is that method, but certainly if, if, we can always choose some of those services, but in a less, I mean, I guess if you deliver a part of them and do it, as I mentioned, do it in phases.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, we're here to negotiate more quickly.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we, we want to work with Bastrop, you know, to give you the services and stuff, you know.
Would you come back to that place so we can do it?
We're a very, very nice, wonderful community. We love what we do. We love helping, we love helping communities find a way to envision how to be, how to be better, and how to see opportunities where they sometimes don't see the opportunities that are laying before them. And so, you know, we're here to work with you and try to figure out how to get you where you need to go. So you just, you just let us know, and we'll keep talking, and we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay, let me, let me just say this, and I, I mentioned this earlier, and, and I'm not, I'm not encouraging you not to take more time to peruse and, and talk to other folks. But before I asked them to come, I've searched the budget, talked to staff, looked at our financials, and I'm more than comfortable with our capacity to be financially, to be able to financially support this in its totality. Even though I asked them, and when they presented it, I asked them to put it in component parts, sort of cafeteria. Once we start this, we need to do the complete package. The City of Bastrop deserves that. We have the capacity to do it, and I'm, I'm strongly recommending to you, in whatever deliberation that you do, that you think about it as a whole rather than component parts. This community has been delayed in not having these kinds of regulations, and we're suffering the result of that. So first, financially, we can afford it. Secondly, my, my recommendation to you, strong recommendation to you, is that when we consider this, we consider it as a whole. Thirdly, let me know who you want to talk to and what you want to do. Let's do it the first and next week. And I want to be prepared to call a special call meeting to get your reconsiderations and take action on this one way or the other. And we want, I, I'd like to do that by the end of the week, next week. So be prepared to let me know who you want to talk to, and let me try to convene those folks, what other questions you have, what you need to review. Mr. Lawrence is here from a contractual perspective, and we will answer those questions and, and let us, let us move on. Thank you again, ladies.
Let us know if there's anything more that you need for comments, okay?
Thank you very much. Mr. Vereen with Main Street.
Give a update of what has happened in the, over the holiday season in the Main Street program. Great holiday season downtown. Everybody was pleased with it. I think that was probably in part due to the, you know, on the heels of the meal's success, we had the holiday, the meal's announcement, we had the holiday season, so everybody was in a good mood and was apparently shopping in Bastrop. So had good reports down there. We had four events downtown during the holidays. They were all a big hit. Some of them were the largest crowds we've ever seen, like open house and stuff like that, at least in many years. So that was encouraging, too. I think people are getting out and are more comfortable, and especially hopefully they'll keep shopping in Bastrop. We are continuing to work on the wayfinding signage. I know y'all have seen the 165, that one's been up a while. Now, there's one on the Marouge Highway. I don't know if you've seen that. It's to be landscaped, that's the next phase for it, and then it'll be complete. The light should be getting turned on next week for that one. Then the next one will be on 139, right there, where that Clark Lee subdivision is. That's the next location. Holding off on 425 because of the highway problems. Also, those are all designed, they're just waiting to be fabricated and installed. We are also working on, after you go to the gateway signs, you shrink down and go into what they call the trailblazer, which will actually direct us to like the municipal center with it pointing like, there'll be one at the downtown pointing municipal center straight ahead, to direct the motorist to the locations that we got planned out. We, we are planning, we met last week planning on some, the spring music fence for the music on Main Street, you know, that's popular, so believe it or not, you have to start weighing events on, on that, planning those. So working on that. We hope to have some really good ones for the spring. We have money through the Tourism Commission that we're using for that. We also are planning our whole new, we did a big promotion campaign that we had gotten a grant for promoting like shop Bastrop, come see Bastrop. We want to continue that in, into the spring as well. So next week or the week before, we hand exactly the same date, we will be planning a whole campaign around that, too. So that's kind of exciting. Keep people coming back. Now that they've been here during the holidays, we want to keep them coming back. The other big thing that's happened is, most of you, we got a piece, Main, friends of Main Street had a piece of property donated to them that we will use as for additional parking at the visitor center, was where the old Breakfield building was. So we are gonna make that into an attractive parking lot with the light, just like the ones that are on the, on Washington across from our next now, have attractive light, just same light poles, banners that designated as parking, some landscaping and everything. So it's going to be real nice, and the Petrus family was generous enough to donate it to us.
Where that's button, Mike?
The old Breakfield building on Pine.
Right across from Bastrop Trinity.
Yes, that's exactly right. So that'd be nice.
It's been torn down, so slab is just there now.
We're excited about that. That's kind of the projects we've got going on.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ms. Vereen?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I, I need to alter the agenda once again, that I need to have one of my, one of staffers to go and do something that's very vital in the clerk's office. So Mr. Thomas, I need to bring you up and do your presentation. Monica, I think you're going to do something operate.
Okay. Mr. Dwayne Thomas has a presentation for walking park, and we want to allow him to do this at this time, and then we'll get back on the agenda because I have a staffer who's involved in the technical piece of this that needs to be a part of this. Okay?
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and to the Board of Alderpersons for your time and your consideration. I will make this brief. What I'd like to talk about for your consideration for more time in the next City Council meeting is walking parks. And walking parks have become pretty common in most American cities, and what we're proposing is the introduction of the Smith-Wilson Memorial Walking Park in the vicinity of, of the Barron Park area. We will offer, as part of it, it will have open parking. There will be designated areas for strength and, for strengthening and exercising. It will be a memorial to John Smith and Charles Wilson, as well as, we'll also have placards for law enforcement and firefighters who have fallen in the line of duty. There will also be a patriotic and community display wall. I'd like to show you the proposed area that will be, it, it will be centrally located between East Madison Park, the Bond House, the Morehouse Council on Aging, and it will offer parking between Sassafras Street and the walking park entrance itself. What we have done is, we have looked at other cities and other walking parks in other cities, excuse me, just to get, just to get some basic ideas about how we would set these, set this in place. There is, in the area that we've chosen, there's varying terrain. Just to show you a few of the, the few pictures taken in the area that we'd like to use, there's a creek bed that we'd like to drill some bridges over, just to encourage, you know, the natural beauty, to enhance the, the enjoyment of exercise, the enjoyment of the outdoors, and the enjoyment of Bastrop. We, you know, we acknowledge that we have a lovely city, and, and it is, we, what we would like to do is to, to avail parts of it, the more natural parts of it, to exercise, to getting people healthier. And if you have a healthier city, then, if you have a healthier community, then you have a healthier city. What, what we've done, or what we are looking to do, is to, to open up this, this walking park, and, and possibly in the future, several other walking parks to the elderly as, as a means of exercise, and to, and, and to the, and to dedicate something to the memory of those who have, have made a lasting impression on our community, those who have benefited our community and our way of life. What we are proposing is the Smith-Wilson Memorial Park and Walking Trail. And what we would also like to do is to just have you think about this for your consideration for the next Board of Alderpersons and City Council meeting. If you have any questions, preliminary questions, I, I must also admit that we don't, I don't have a full presentation ready at this point, but what I would like, what I did want to do at this meeting is to just get everyone thinking about the possibility. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, if at all possible.
Would you go back to your first overview? This, this is in the area of Barron Ball Park?
Yes, sir. This is a map of the area.
And I think I see Barron Ball Park.
Barron Ball Park is, is in the center.
Can you put your, can you put your cursor on there?
Yeah. This is the Ball, Ball Park area right here. What we propose... My apologies.
Is that another view of it?
Uh, no, sir. I'm afraid this is a...
Something else.
It's a golf course.
What this is, is an example of a, a map of a walking trail.
Okay. But that, it's in that area over there, and you're going to come back with, with more details at some other time, is that...
Yes. What, what I'd like to do is come back at the next, at next month's City Council meeting with a more detailed, with more detailed maps, and a more detailed presentation, including a price breakdown, and, and more details in, in how we'd like to implement the program.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I want to say that before we leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've been talking to Arthur on Pog Group for the last year and a half, or two years, about getting a walking trail in Dotson. I asked him some time ago about going through that, fanning out the trees. We got some trees fanning out. And I had envisioned a walking trail around that park where people could come out and walk and have proper lighting, and at the same time, the, the kids could play around while, while, while they exercise themselves. And I have, the only thing I've been able to get are some trees cut down. And I've been checking out there, we got lights out there that's not even burning. I asked the lady this week, or last week, about checking with the energy in reference to replacing light bulbs. Three in particular. One at the entrance of Samuel, one at the storage building, and one at the bottom of Dotson Street, which is about halfway between the park and West Madison. Now, they came out and did the, the one on Samuel, and did the one by the storage building right there, by the, by the gym, but they did not replace bulb down on, on Dotson. I found out since then, there are some bulbs that's out in the park, that, that they would not be replaced or have not replaced. You know, we, we cut back on lights one time in order to save money. So I'm assuming they're charging us for, for poles where that light is. And I'm, I'm also assuming they're charging us whether that's a bulb burning there or not. So we're paying for some services that we are not getting.
I'll attest to that.
That's, 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 that's nice. But that's property, do we own that property?
No, sir.
You're talking about property the city doesn't own. And I'm talking about property that we already own. I'm not against this. That's, that's, I'm not against what you're proposing. Only thing I'm, my concern is taking care of what we have, and I think, and I talked to you, and I talked to Arthur about coming up with some activities that can kind of open up the use to Dotson. And I also talked with, about some security that hadn't gotten to you because you've been out of town. And, and, and I've been checking with the police department in reference to some, to some security. My point is, council people, before you go too far out there with that, I don't think Smith, Smith, Smith Wilson, I'm, I'm not down playing Smith and Wilson. And I think the community has really rallied behind them, and, and, and doing something in their honor. But before you start obligating money over there, I really would appreciate it if you look at some money in, within a park that we already own, and make it usable for these activities.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. And thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Sir.
Mayor Hawkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Since Mr. Hamlin has mentioned it, I have a big concern about the lighting myself. I go from church, home, and I keep saying I'm going to have to go back and write them down, but we are paying for something that we're not getting. There's four lights right around the high school that are out, and down Marable, and, and the main highway going north. There are so many lights that are out, and I think it's atrocious that we are having to pay. And I have talked to Arthur about it, and I've been told by a representative from the power company that we need to get pole numbers. Well, I'm willing to go out and get pole numbers because it's, it's atrocious. Half of the lights in the city are out.
Okay. Ms. Robinson, let, let me address that this way, and, and Chief Walker.
And, and Chief Walker, there is a procedure that the police department is supposed to notify, they have a, a sign. Let me take my administrative responsibility and, and work between the police department and, and Public Works and Energy, and let's be sure that we are inventorying and monitoring and listing and reporting those lights as, as we should.
Thank you.
It's our fault first that we have not, and I'm, I'm saying it before asking you, but evidently we have not been reporting as we should those lights that, that are there. And, and you're absolutely right, we should not be paying for services, and, and you know I am about that, that we're not getting. So I'll, I'll take responsibility for that, and we'll be sure that we're more alert and, and more aware in fulfilling our responsibilities there. Okay.
Thank you.
Let me get back on the agenda, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mayor Hawkins. City Council, it's always a pleasure to come in and help run kind of light supply. So, um, because that's a very interesting and important city council meeting, um, the lights up here, if you're all these plants, just maybe to, to fix the things to, in, you know, here in Florida, just mainly on growth standpoint, because the infrastructure is implied to the city of Bastrop to, to do more quantity. Not that I, I definitely, I favor it as a city of Bastrop, I look at all of our areas outside of city of Bastrop, like the structure here to bring the most businesses into this area. And so I've been revising my, my notes here, as we were pointing down this, that, you know, I guess tonight is the night for mapping, but I have completed, or SCU has completed the land use study on the city limits of Bastrop to the Morehouse Parish line, the Washington Parish, and, um...
Going out 165.
Yeah. For, this is something sort of a plan, this is just a study that is a very difficult area when I started working here because it's on four quad maps and four plus zone maps and it's kind of running at that north-east or south-west direction through there. And so that is complete, and I do plan on presenting the city, because I know that area is very important to the city, and it's outside the city limits. And I have a set to present to the, the police jury as well, but I'm waiting for four national USDA because they would like to be here when we do that. But in, in getting back to the mapping, things that Morehouse Economic Development has planned in the immediate future was the implementation of a, a GIS system, a software system, and our in, in-house, and our office, which includes industrial sites and pieces of property they're for sale, and, and possibly the half dozen sites along that 165 that I'm gonna be continuing to do work on. So I am very interested in talking with the ladies that are here tonight about what type of software that they're gonna implement to their program and to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page. And so I'm very interested in discussing that. Of course, my software, I'm planning to use an ESRI, R map, and, I don't know, RP. And so this is, you know, we just, just try to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Just turn that mic back around, please.
And, um, so I guess we've had enough about maps, and I just wanted to say that continuing to work hard in the industrial park, I have some plans to put together some signs for the industrial park over the next year and, you know, during this, this fiscal year. And, and getting back to what the gentleman was talking about, the walking trails, I know that, that many, for many years, people have used the industrial park as a walking trail. And I have had some complaints from people in the industrial park about people, particularly people walking at night in the industrial park and almost being hit by automobiles. So I think that, that that's something, you know, that we identify, that that is an area that people like to walk. But I'm, I'm not sure what the solution is to it, but maybe that we can, as we work through this, the planning and zoning, and I'm an advocate for planning and zoning, it, it protects, it protects the rights of property owners. You don't wanna build a nice home and then have someone come in and, and build some type of business.
Sawmill.
In there right next to it, or, yeah, or a sawmill and, and start selling swings, you know, or, you know, there's just things that if you, it protects the rights and, and most businesses that come in, that is one of the first things they ask is about the zoning requirements. And actually, Bastrop just kind of grew around the mill, and that, that's the way, and it's not that it's bad, but I think that we do have some things that we can improve. So in getting back to the economic development portion of this, I am looking at some other sites within the city of Bastrop that I probably need to coordinate quickly with the City Council on, in light of some things that I'm aware of now that I wasn't aware of when I came into the meeting. But I am marketing some other sites. I visited SMI in their Franklin office on December 20th and met with the St. Mary Parish Economic Development person, and we're really trying to put together a, a large, really almost a statewide plan for the expansion of that company. And I don't believe that many people in the community realize that SMI employs about 200, 250 people. I know Mayor Hawkins does, he's been down and visited with them when they came to the city li, uh, at the end of last year. We're one mon, we're one year into that project, we're meeting all of our expectations of what that project is supposed to produce. The payroll is close to a million. That really pumps a lot of money into the Bastrop economy. So I, that, that is a huge project, but it's just kind of one of those things that it, you know, it's, no, it's not the car plant, it's, it's not the brass ring of economic development from that standpoint, but these are projects that are very important for small business development in the Bastrop area. And I just wanted to add that we, we're having a lot of retail activity and, and things happening in the community, and I think that this is a result of, of the announcement that IP is gonna stay, and so I just think that it's gonna be a banner year for Bastrop this year. Looking forward to, to good things. Are there any questions? I went through that really fast because we're running late, but are there any questions that anyone has?
Thank you, Ms. King.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Lishfield?
This is gonna be the shortest one there is. The state of Louisiana inspected, had our airport inspection October 17th, and I briefed the mayor, a couple of items that are ongoing that, that he commented on, but it's part of his job to do so. But the comment that the mayor asked me to let you all know, and a while back, a year, year and a half ago, we talked about setting the, setting the building blocks or the foundation for the future. And this comment is addressed to the mayor and myself, but it goes for all of the support and all of the city employees that have become part of this. This is a quote, "The airport is in excellent condition overall and is rapidly coming into full compliance with all state and federal standards. The obstructions, the tree obstructions have been removed, the seal coat and new striping added, and other discrepancies corrected. The airport sponsor and manager should be commended for their efforts to improve the facilities." And I thank you, and I thank everybody who works for the city for their help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence? I'm calling you up for this item 11, Discussion and Action on Tenants at the Morehouse Memorial Airport.
Yes, sir.
Would you give us...
Mr. Mayor, I received some complaints, I guess you would say, regarding reluctance to execute written lease agreements.
Would you talk about the, talk about the agreements, for the lease agreements for...
On hangar space.
For hangar space, for people who own airplanes?
That's correct. I think, uh, sometime ago, a short time ago, the city elected to go with a system of having less hours of space at the, hangar space at the airport to execute written lease agreements. And it's my understanding that there has been a reluctance, particularly regarding the three individuals that are named on the agenda, uh, to, to execute a written lease with the city. And the matter was brought to my attention, and I in turn requested that we place this item on the agenda so that, so that it'll be something that is officially brought to your attention and that of the Board of Alderpersons. Personally, let me say this, I don't think that we should be doing any, any verbal lease agreements with people on, on items as important, as important as using the city's airport and its hangars. We need to, to have, we, we need to be professional, we need to be businesslike and to have all of our agreements memorialized in writing. With that said, I don't, I don't think that we should create exceptions. I see absolutely no reason why we should not demand that our lease agreements on hangar space be in writing. And, and quite frankly, the, the city does have an option. You can continue to do what you're doing, and that is to have a, a verbal agreement, which I strongly recommend against, or you can draw the line and say either negotiate with us, execute a written lease agreement, or we won't rent space to you.
Okay, now, in this situation, these individuals are not delinquent in their payments, as I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
It's not that the individuals have not paid the required amount, it's just that they have not signed the document which seals the relationship between the city of Bastrop and them as it relates to the property that they, that they have there.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that at, at some point, this, this, this is, this can become an audit concern, really, when you have agreements with people, but it's not reflected in writing.
Okay.
And so we need, this needs to be addressed, it, it's something that just really needs to happen.
If, if, uh, if we do have a lease that is required and individuals do not sign it, should we stop taking their payments and then ask them to remove their property, or require that they remove their property?
That is an option that you have, yes.
And other options, or...
Keep the, the status quo remain in place.
And having a verbal agreement, taking their money, but, but there is no...
That's correct.
With the verbal agreement, they have no expectations of us, nor do we of them. It's just a...
Yes. I mean, that, that is, I mean, you, you, you can say that, that there is very little agreed upon, except for the fact that they have a present right of use of the facilities for an indeterminate period that the city may elect to terminate at any time.
Okay. Okay, does, does the Board of Alderpersons understand the, the situation?
I want a question, Mayor.
Mr. Hamlin.
Why haven't they signed?
I do not know.
You know, Mr. Lishfield?
Okay.
Who?
Jessica. You, you corresponded to the...
Yes, sir, and from what I understand, mostly, the last time we actually spoke about it was after airport being, I have sent letters and notifications and everything to sign. However, the only thing that I was told was that it was a month-to-month basis, and most of them would prefer a long-term basis. That's the only thing that I'm aware of.
Okay, and I, I, one of the individuals who's listed, I think at least one of the individuals is in the audience, I don't know if that individual would like to speak to this issue, or...
Could I ask a question?
Ms. Robinson.
What do you mean by a long-term agreement? What kind of timeline is that, Jessica?
They didn't really specify, I, I would assume six months to a year, but definitely they wanted longer than a month.
Mr. Lishfield, would you come up and, and Mr. Lawrence?
Sure.
What, what are the terms of the leased, at least, the...
A month, a month.
What does that mean?
Means, uh, by the calendar month, thirty, thirty, thirty-one day increments, basically.
Okay, so, so there's no six month, six month lease, they're not leasing space like...
No, sir, and I, and I talked to Mr. Lawrence about it sometime back, and he says, okay, a person signs a one-year lease, leaves the next month, and now he owes us, owes us eleven months' li, uh, pay. It doesn't make any sense.
I mean, we, Mayor, we have a lot of options in terms of whether to do it on a short-term basis or a long-term basis. For me, the most important thing is that it be in writing.
Sure.
Whatever we do.
Okay, Mr. Lishfield, based, calling on your experience, what is the trend? What, what, what's the norm, what, what happens at other airports with lease space for planes?
The, the term of the lease, I don't know, right off the top of my head, but just about every airport I've come in contact with in Louisiana through the conferences have leases for their hangar space and ti, and ground tied.
I'm asking period of time?
Some have month-to-month, some may have long...
So it's our, if, if, is there any negative to having a three-month or six-month lease?
Uh, no, sir.
I, I wouldn't say that that would be.
I don't see a negative. Now, we had talked, you and I had talked, and, and Mr. Lawrence, and, and we brought it before the, the City Council before, uh, if somebody wanted to build a hangar, we were gonna go drill long term.
Let, let, let's, don't go there. Let's, let's, let's just talk about where we are right now.
Okay.
Okay. This is something, the, the lease period of time doesn't have to be ordained by the Board of Alderpersons, it's an in-house policy thing that we do, right? Is it in, is it, is that a, a, is that an ordinance kind of thing that we establish periods of time for lease?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think that you have to do that.
Okay, all right. And I, because I didn't get, I didn't micromanage that, I wasn't aware of term, I never asked a question about terms. I think if I were leasing space at a, at a, in a hangar, oh, I would want more than a month period of time as well. So let, let's, let's consider Mr. Lishfield and Mr. Lawrence, let's consider offering it, because we do construction, we change, let's do at least three, let's consider doing at least a three- or six-month lease. And, but, if, if, when we get funds and we do projects, that window won't prohibit us from doing stuff.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So if the time element is the, is the issue, first, I, I think we need to establish that written lease, a written lease is required. Can, does this, Board of Alderpersons agree with that?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, what do we need to do to, to, to make that official, Mr. Lawrence?
Have we, uh, it would be a good idea to, to take a vote and go on record that this is, that a written lease is gonna be required...
Okay.
For a hangar space.
Somebody make that motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Hamlin does?
Second.
Mr. Gordon seconds this motion in the discussion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. All right, now, first, we've established that a written lease, written leases, a written lease will be required for individuals who, who, who have space, rent space, lease space at our airport. That's city of Bastrop policy. Now, uh, once we've established that there must be leased, there must be leased space, give me directions on, on how, is this something that Mr. Lishfield and you and I work out as the time?
Yes.
And, and you have a manual, right?
Yes, sir, and it's...
Would that be included in the manual?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so does that, does that manual addition need to come back to this body?
Correct, and, and I've been working with Mr. Lawrence on that.
One thing at a time?
Yes.
On this one item?
Yes.
This item would need to be brought back to this board, or can we approve it as being added to the manual right now?
Well, what you just said, yes, has the force of policy, so you can say that it's part of the manual right now.
Here we go. Anybody for three months? Anybody for six months?
Six months.
Anybody against six months? Six months. Is that a policy? Everybody approve that?
Yes.
See how quick that can be done?
Yeah.
That's to be included in the policy, and six-month leases or the mandated periods of time and the mandated leases for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Those individuals, Board of Alderpersons, those individuals who do not sign leases, what happens to them? Mr. Lawrence said the option, since we've established the fact that there must be a lease signed, it can't be handshake deal. lease signed, it can't be handshake deal.
That's my main concern.
Okay. So if they don't sign the lease, to me, the nexus is they must remove their, their property from the airport.
Send them a letter.
Is there in opposition?
No.
No.
To that policy?
Okay. Let me ask a question. What if it's not removed?
We, we, we would put it, we'd start charging them rent, we'd de-lease it.
You can do that, you can initiate eviction proceedings, you could do whatever you need to do.
Have it put in storage and charge on storage?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Hawkins.
Okay. Ms. Oliver, first, you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hamlin.
Mayor, I thought we established the fact that they, they did not wanna sign a lease because they want a long term. And, and they feel off of six months. I'm hoping that, that that's something that they will work with you on and work with the city on, uh, since they see we're trying to put forth effort to make everything work smoother for, for them as well at the city. So personally, I, I hope they, they will accept the, the, uh, the six months and go ahead and sign it. If, if they fail to do so, then, uh, we just have to take the necessary action for whatever it calls for.
Okay, hold on, let me, let me go.
I feel that we, we would have done our part.
Okay. Okay, let me go, Mr. Gordon, and then Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor Hawkins, could we not engage, uh, our attorney into, uh, comprising this, this lease agreement, uh, with the, with the precautions of whatever, uh, of not paying the, paying the lease agreement? Include all that in that lease agreement so that it's in writing, uh, and a prepared document, uh, for the six-month period of time or...
That, that will be done, I was simply getting...
Okay.
Your desire as to what you wanted the repercussions to be as a result of it. Well, at this point then, if, if, if somebody fails to pay, pay that lease, let's remove the plane, put it in storage, or, or store it and charge them storage fee for it.
Store it where?
At the airport, but in a, in a, in a a- area where they won't have access to it. We'll work that part out. We got an opinion.
They need the right to, to remove it if they so desire.
I, yeah, you know, I, I guess, uh, my part of view, I'm not as concerned, and maybe, maybe I had a miscommunication about this. I'm not concerned about how long it is. I'm concerned about the legislative auditor, if somebody's coming and saying, what, what's your agreement with this person?
Sure.
And, uh, that, that's the main reason that I'm asking for, for this to be on the agenda.
Okay, and I think we've accomplished that. I just wanted to be sure that we completed the circle. And, and Mr. Hamlin, I'm pretty sure that you're right. If somebody has a plane and, and they're not willing to pay the lease, and, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that that won't be an issue. But anyway, uh, if you memorialize that, it'll be included in the manual, the board has taken that action and effective immediately with notification.
Uh, Mr. Scarborough, you're right, the, the necessary letters to those individuals and, and go from there. Mr. Lenore?
He can, uh, renew his lease every six months if he so desires.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
It's a six-month renewable lease. Okay. Anything else on that issue?
No, sir.
All right.
You want to ask a question, Mr. Lenore?
No, he got, he got it.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, liquor license.
Sir, Mayor, board of all, I have one application for renewal of a class R restaurant liquor license, uh, class restaurant license, which allows him to sell alcohol in his restaurant. It's a Mario Andrade Pueblo Viejo, 1608's Madison. We've had no problem whatsoever from the establishment, uh, and I recommend it to approve his renewal.
This is just a point of information, on our license, they buy their liquor license, but they also buy an R permit or the R...
They, they buy the, the R, their class R license.
Put you in, inclusive.
And under that, they can sell both beer and, excuse me, beer and mixed drinks under this license.
Do we sell on Sundays?
Uh...
I will draw that question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, for what?
Let's, let's...
There, there are certain, uh, uh, hours to take in, sell beer, beer only.
If you're at the, at the corner of Cleveland and...
Yes, sir.
Might be good eye in there, huh?
Okay. Uh, you, you've heard, and you recommend it's approved?
Recommend it, so we can do that application.
I make a motion that we accept it.
All right.
Whatever.
It's been moved and seconded by Ms. Robinson, who's in one district, and Mr. Hamlin, who's in another one, to approve a liquor license in somebody else's district.
Excuse me. Who did you did that?
You were...
That's perfectly all right with me, Mayor. In a discussion. If in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business to be brought before this, Mayor, or all the persons? I, I have a couple of items and this is not, we don't need to spend the agenda to do this, in recognizing people who were of longstanding, who are not with us since our last meeting, not with us, not with us, not with us, not with us, but not with us as part of our staff. Jake Oros, who was Assistant Public Works Director, retired effective, what, the 31st? The 31st of December. Uh, we, we, we miss him and he too will be recognized for his, uh, many years of service at, at, at a later, later date.
Don't we give him a resolution too?
If, if it's your desire.
We gave Alan one, didn't we give Alan one?
Yes, sir.
Good, take one.
All right. Make a motion.
I make a motion.
We might need to get him to come back.
It's been jointly seconded by, by Mr. Lenore and Mr. Gordon that a resolution be adopted recognizing Mr. Jake Oros for his many, many years, 26, 20, how many? 29 years of service to the city of Bastrop, his citizenry, uh, and, and all who have entered our, our, our walls. We need to, very soon, hopefully at our next meeting, we, we need to dispose, resolve, bring back the discussion on fireworks. We did not, uh, we are not selling fireworks, uh, renewing licenses. The next historically allowable fireworks sales period would be for July 4th. And, and as you can tell from the meetings that we had, those individuals who are in those businesses need to make preparations, uh, need to make financial commitments and it's only fair to them that we make a decision one way or the other so that they can know exactly where we are. So I'm asking you between now and our next regular scheduled board of all the persons meeting, that you deliberate and think and do your research and be prepared to make some decision one way or the other. Questions on that? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion with adjourn.
Ms. Robinson does?
I'll second it.
Good gracious, one, one, two, three, four, everybody unanimously.